And of course, Black Lives Matter. Do we think our little white asses are the only ones that matter? No.
All right, Big John, back at it again. This week, big week, big, big week. I say that every week, but this week is huge because we heard from the Queen of Appalachia herself this week on an important matter. Dolly Parton, the patron saint of Sevier County, Tennessee, herself coming out in support of Black Lives Matter. John, your reaction?
The Queen has spoken. If you disagree, you have to leave.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. I want to, I want to read the quote because I think that she framed it perfectly for all Appalachians to understand. And it is quote, and this is from the Queen herself. Quote, "Of course, Black Lives Matter. Do we think our little white asses are the only ones that matter? No." End quote. God love her. She is the best. She is the best. I was, I was not worried. I just, you know, Dolly Parton, this is, this is a big deal. This is a humongous deal because Dolly Parton is notoriously a political, and not to say that this is a political thing, I mean, I think it's made into a political thing, but it shouldn't be. Uh, but she just, you know, she is not someone who often voices her opinion on most anything that relates to like any issue outside of, of her work. And so for her to make this statement, you know, is a big deal. It's a big, I think, I don't think it should be overshadowed. Now, it was, it's a fun quote and we love it, but it's a big deal for her to say that. And I think it means a lot that she's saying that. I think her, her voice speaks volumes.
Yeah. And I always, I actually, funny enough, I didn't know that we were gonna start with this, but I was in the car today and, and I had a long drive. And so I was, I was thinking to myself and I, I thought, I, I hate the excuse that people make, like when their grandparents say something racist and they're like, well, they're not racist, they were just born in a different generation. That is such horseshit because one, no one, no one gives the younger generations any type of leniency. It doesn't matter. The only thing that we were born into is laziness, according to some of these other generations. But two, two, if that was the case, every person from that, those generations would be racist. And that's not true. It's just a choice. It's literally a choice to be racist. Dolly Parton, the Queen, proves that this is an outrageous excuse. It needs to stop. If you make this as excuse for your grandparents or whoever, stop. It, it's, it's ridiculous. It's annoying and it's one of those things that needs to stop anyway, but uh, it allowed me to get on my soapbox here. So I'm glad, I'm glad for that at least. But yeah, so the Queen has spoken. If you disagree, leave.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and we, we support Dolly Parton on this show all the time. Before we get into today's interview, we do have some updates to share with y'all regarding the Queer Appalachia issue fallout. Uh, I'm not sure really what to call it right now, but since this whole thing started, just to get everybody caught up, Queer Appalachia was a, uh, an Instagram account. It was a lot of different things. Uh, but we found out that a lot of the money they were collecting, uh, for various different things, there's not really any financial accountability there. There was a Washington Post article that came out about it and everything. We'll link to it again in the show notes so you can read it if, if you're not up to speed on that already. And there's been a lot of calls for accountability that have, to our knowledge, essentially gone unheeded. Uh, there's been thousands of dollars raised by this organization that there hasn't been any accountability thus far for. Uh, and so we are going to continue raising this issue and we are planning on putting out a bonus pod this Thursday, this Thursday, the 20th, uh, where we talk a little bit about the, some of the allegations that were made, uh, some of the responses by Queer Appalachia and our take on it. And so we just want to make y'all aware of that, to look in your feeds this Thursday. Expect that podcast out then. And we're, we're really interested in talking about it. Uh, it seems like this issue's gone off the radar right now, but there's really still not been any accountability to our knowledge, uh, yet. And so we're going to continue pressing that issue. And, uh, and we did also just discover that their Patreon is still active. And so if you are a patron, we would encourage you to reconsider that, uh, in light of recent events, at least until this is all settled down and we figure out the truth behind these, uh, these financial figures that we're hoping to, to get from them. Uh, but yeah, John, uh, um, what do you have to add?
I'm trying to hold, I'm trying to hold back, you know? I mean, I have, I literally have a segment on this show where I just bitch about people. But mostly, you know, it's usually warranted. I'm excited that we're going to do a whole episode where I can express my feelings. Uh, but I'm with you. If you're a patron of theirs, maybe reconsider it at least until they can prove something. There's a lot of, a lot of things that are, that seem to be a little funny. Chuck and I will talk about it, like, like he said, on Thursday. It's one of those situations that we obviously wish never happened. Uh, and looking back, I mean, us not knowing, you know, hindsight's 2020. We wish we'd never had them on the show. But the past is the past and only thing that we can do is continue to, to tell you the truth and that's what we hope to do on Thursday.
Definitely. And that's, that's the truth as we see it right now. And, uh, and so we'll, we'll dive into that more this Thursday. But enough to dispense with the negatives. Let's turn to the positives. We have a fantastic interview today on the show. Rosemary Ketchum, the recently elected councilwoman from the great city of Wheeling, West Virginia, the first openly transgender person to ever be elected to public office in West Virginia, joined us for a really great conversation. We talked about everything. We talked about her historic victory, both in terms of being the first openly transgender elected official, but also the first person ever elected on the West Virginia Can't Wait platform. Talked to her about that, her life growing up and a little bit about city politics. So we really enjoyed our conversation and we hope you do too. Rosemary, should I call you councilwoman, Rosemary? Is that, is that appropriate? I mean, is that the title?
No, you could, you could just call me Rosemary.
Okay. Good, good, good. Um, so Rosemary, thank you so much for, for coming on and, and talking with us today. I really, really appreciate you making time in your schedule.
Thank you for inviting me on. I'm so grateful to, you know, be able to join some fellow Appalachians.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, to get started, I was hoping, I know you've probably been asked some of these questions a lot, but I was hoping to just get maybe a little bit about your background.
Yeah. So interestingly enough, I am not a native West Virginian, which, uh, when you run for local office, that is kind of, you know, the litmus test, you know? Folks say, you know, where'd you go to high school? And, uh, you know, the connections that, you know, a person running for local office, um, really require are the ones that you have growing up in a place. So, um, I, I had to work really hard to overcome that. Uh, I grew up in East Liverpool, Ohio, about an hour outside of Wheeling, still considered the Ohio Valley. But, um, uh, we, you know, in East Liverpool, a lot of people think Wheeling, West Virginia is a very small town. We have about, um, 28,000 people. Um, but in East Liverpool, there's 10,000 people. So about half the population. Um, and you know, growing up in East Liverpool, my parents, um, really blue collar upbringing. My, my father worked in the local factory, um, for as long as I remember, making Fiesta ware. Um, and my mother was a waitress on and off while raising, um, you know, myself and my, you know, three siblings. And it was, you know, for many folks who grow up in poverty, um, especially if you, you know, live in a community that's also impoverished, you don't know anything different. Do you know what I mean? It's just the way that life works. Uh, and you know, I didn't really understand the struggle that my parents had, um, until I, you know, became more cognizant, until I became a teenager and I realized the, you know, the struggle, um, of, you know, living in poverty and having to support a family. Um, and of course, this is kind of in the midst of the 2008 financial crisis that my family, you know, experienced and so many of us were impacted by. So, you know, growing up, it was, uh, like I said, humble, but you know, we, we never went without anything. Um, and you know, the house was filled with love, which, you know, is, you know, something you can't buy, which I'm grateful for.
Well, then I guess like a follow-up though would be, uh, how did you end up in Wheeling?
Yeah. What a question. Um, I find, you know, what's fascinating, uh, I've lived in, in West Virginia for 10 years. I'm a little over 10 years. Uh, and, uh, if, if a person was not born and raised in West Virginia, they oftentimes chose to, you know, live here. And, uh, I find those stories particularly fascinating, um, because, uh, you know, unfortunately, West Virginia doesn't receive the most flattering, uh, headlines. And, you know, a lot of folks, you know, it is a sacrifice to move or to stay in a place like West Virginia for many people. So for me, uh, I came here for a couple of different reasons, um, but most, you know, I think, um, seriously, in 2010, um, it, my family experienced a house fire in East Liverpool, Ohio. Yeah. It was my father's, you know, it was my family, my childhood home, my father's family home that his, his father had built. Um, and it was just a, you know, New Year's Eve, um, we had a, uh, uh, wood burning stove in our basement. If that doesn't tell you, you know, how kind of Appalachian, you know, we were living. Yeah. We had a wood burning stove in our basement and it had, um, you know, caught flame in the middle of the night. Um, and it really, you know, thrust our, our family that already, you know, lived in, in poverty, but kind of maintained, uh, uh, you know, a standard of living, you know, really, um, you know, shook our lives up. And my parents split, split apart shortly after that. And, you know, we had to make a decision. We didn't, you know, as many people in poverty, we didn't have, um, home insurance. We didn't have a backup plan. We didn't have a plan B. And so literally my parents who were in there, um, who were middle aged and they're, you know, 48, I think my mother was 48 and my dad was 52, you know, having to start over. I was 16 and, you know, my dad decided to stay in East Liverpool and attempt to rebuild his family home. Um, and my mom said, well, that's not for me. Um, and, uh, you know, kind of picked a point on the map and said, Wheeling looks like a great place. Um, my sister had married a man whose family, um, had some connections to Wheeling. So, uh, we had never been there before. Um, it, or in, you know, in a serious sense, aside from visiting, and we thought that's our, that's our new home. Um, and 10 years later, uh, I decided to run for office.
Speaking of running for office, I, uh, in, uh, 2018, I ran for office. I know how tough it is. I can only imagine how much tougher it was on your end, which I, Chuck and I talked about this, it's insane. Uh, and we're, we're super proud of everything that you've been able to do, uh, especially, especially here in West Virginia. And the funny thing is, you were talking earlier about, um, being from West Virginia is this like really big deal. I ran in the Eastern Panhandle where no one, no one gave a damn that I was from West Virginia because none of them are. So it's, yeah, it's, it's such a different atmos, I mean, and coming back to Parkersburg, everybody's the same like it is in Wheeling. If you're from Parkers, if you're from West Virginia, especially if you're from Parkersburg, you might win an election here.
Right. It's so fascinating to me and, you know, of course I've never, you know, ran for office anywhere else, but that's a very unique quality for the state of West Virginia, you know? A lot of people around the country are from a lot of different places. Um, but I think this is a particularly, um, you know, unique aspect in the southern part of West Virginia. Um, it's really strong down there that, you know, your family ties, your family home, your history, um, could make the difference between a vote or a, you know, or not. Uh, so I was grateful to be able to kind of circumvent that, but you know, it took a lot of work.
Yeah, definitely. So I guess the question comes, why run? Why, what made you want to do this?
Yeah. So I lived, you know, in this, I've lived in the city of Wheeling for a decade now. And, um, coming here, um, after graduating high school and starting college, I wanted so badly to, you know, engage myself in our community. I was homeschooled for the majority of my K through 12 education. Uh, I think I started homeschool around fourth or fifth grade. And, uh, while I was so grateful that my, you know, parents gave me that opportunity and I, I really felt like I thrived and excelled in homeschool, you know, you, there are caveats. You know, I didn't have the same, uh, you know, I weren't, I wasn't able to build those same relationships, uh, with my peers and, and be able to feel connected to my community in a substantial way. And so, uh, I'm a first generation college student and, uh, you know, being able to kind of receive a college education for me was of course about an education, but also about a comprehensive experience of how I can, you know, really learn, uh, to not only be an adult, be an educated person and be a, you know, effective, uh, and contributing member of my community. And so I joined every organization. I, um, I bursted into every room uninvited that I could in the city of Wheeling, um, and, and tried to be unapologetic about it because I realized that, you know, these folks, they don't know me. And, you know, that can be an asset or that could be a curse. And I, I decided to treat that as a, as an opportunity to, you know, introduce myself to my community, learn, but also share, uh, what I thought, um, you know, we could do in the city of Wheeling to improve the quality of lives of the people here. But I did not first think that, you know, would be exemplified in a run for office. I don't think many people do, you know? I, I asked every one of my friends to run for office before I decided to myself. And some of them did, um, most of them didn't. But, uh, I, you know, after community organizing for many, many years, you begin to realize that you can have the best policy positions in the world, you can have the most data, the best statistics, um, the greatest, um, most persuasive content. But at the end of the day, our biggest obstacles are the elected officials that we need to convince. And, uh, I decided that if I really wanted to actualize the, you know, issues that I care so much about, uh, I ought to run.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like that that is, that's a pretty solid answer. I'll give you, I'll give you an A on that one. Uh, I, I do like, I do like that. Well, I guess, I mean, the, the big question then is, when you picked what you were going to run for, was it, you know, why council? Why not House of Delegates or State Senate or, you know, whatever? Why, why be a councilwoman?
Interesting question. Yeah. Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, there are a lot, there are a lot of opportunities for, you know, somebody who's interested in running for office. Um, and I am lucky and privileged enough to have developed relationships with some of our House members, some of our state senators, uh, and, you know, many of the folks who work in politics, um, in the state of West Virginia, mostly on the Democratic side, but some members of the, you know, uh, Republican party as well. And, and so I had, um, a lot of these thoughts about, well, what would, what would a, you know, House of Delegates race look like for me? Or what would a State Senate race look like for me? But I, you know, I always came back to my love for the city of Wheeling and believing so much in our potential and so much in, in the power of engagement. And, you know, I both have the more principled strategic kind of answer, but also the, the much larger nebulous answer of, you know, I just love my city so much and I want to see ours thrive. And also, you know, uh, I didn't feel prepared to run a bigger race. If I'm being honest, I didn't know that I had the, the background, the lived experience, uh, to tackle something that big. Maybe that's my imposter syndrome, you know, um, coming out, but I wanted to be practical about it and I wanted to run a race I could win. Um, and, you know, city council was the most strategic, but also the one that felt right and felt most at home. So, uh, again, I didn't, I didn't think I, I didn't know I would win. Um, I hoped I would. I worked really hard, but, uh, you know, on election night, I, uh, was incredibly honored and grateful to, you know, have been, you know, chosen by our constituents to, uh, represent our community. And the, the last, you know, kind of consideration is that, um, we serve four-year terms in the city of Wheeling on our city council. Um, and that's amazing. Uh, typically, you know, terms for the House or, you know, other offices are two-year terms. And it's really hard to, you know, get the hang of things and to really, um, pass thoughtful policies and ordinances, laws, if you only have two years to do it. Uh, so I really took into account my ability, um, to, to do the work that I thought was necessary.
I, I really appreciate that answer, especially how you couched it in terms of you starting out in community organizing. I feel like too often people who are on sort of the front lines in advocacy are not the ones that are getting elected to public office, but should be because they really truly understand the issues and what people really care about. And so it really, it really, uh, makes me happy to see that that was your background and that that's like part of what motivated you to run. And you mentioned election night and I'm, I'm now, I'm sure that so many people have already asked you this question, so I apologize if it's ad nauseam. But it is a really, really big deal. I'm sure both for you, but for our state is you are, and I think I'm getting this right, the first openly transgender person ever elected to public office in West Virginia. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay. And so what did, what does that mean for you? And what does that mean for the community of Wheeling?
I did, I, you know, running for office, you know, campaigning here in the city of Wheeling, it, uh, I think I thought about, I thought about the potential of a historic race once. I, I, I remember thinking, well, that would be interesting if, you know, I was able to do that. Uh, and, and I really didn't let that kind of color or, you know, influence my campaign or thinking about, um, what election night would look like and thereafter, you know? And, and it didn't come up even in conversation with constituents. It was one of the things that I prepared for with my, with my campaign team was like, well, what if, you know, my gender identity is used as a, you know, a wedge issue here? What if this is used as a ploy against, you know, the issues that I care about? And I, I don't want this to kind of overwhelm or envelop, uh, my, uh, you know, candidacy. Um, and, you know, it, thank goodness, surprisingly, we didn't have to kind of worry about that at all. And I think part of that was that I, I wasn't new to many of the people that I, you know, uh, many of the voters, you know? I had organized around issues in our community, um, including racial justice, LGBTQ issues, um, mental equity, access to, you know, um, democracy. Uh, and so I think I was a familiar face. Maybe they were sick of me by the time I got to their door. But I, I think I had already kind of built up a reputation in my community, which was not easy because I'm not from here. And so I really, you know, was in overdrive, uh, doing that for the past few years. Uh, and so, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't run because I thought it would be historic, of course. I ran, you know, to affect change in my community. But the response has been incredibly overwhelming, almost embarrassingly so. I mean, I, I get an at on, you know, Twitter from somebody notable, or I get a letter in the mail and I'm, you know, almost embarrassed. I'm like, oh my goodness, people are so kind, so kind and so sweet. And actually yesterday, and I haven't made this, um, an announcement yet, um, I've tried to figure out the best way to do it. The city of Pittsburgh, um, uh, passed a proclamation that July 1st, uh, in the city of Pittsburgh is Rosemary Ketchum Day. And
Oh my goodness. That's amazing.
Literally was like, I got it in the mail and I, I had to double take. I thought, am I being pranked here? Is, what is this about? But, you know, a, a city council member in the, um, city of Pittsburgh reached out to me, um, when I got elected and, and expressed, you know, his gratitude and thanks and, um, all of those wonderful things. And, and so, yeah, the, the response has been miraculous. And, you know, for as much as I mourn, you know, our democracy right now, um, in, in so many ways, I'm also energized and invigorated by, you know, the potential we have to, to do good things. And I, and I hope and believe we're moving in the right direction, um, as a country. God willing.
Well, I, I will not continue to, to keep focusing on one thing. I know I've, I've watched, the only thing that I have to ask, because we, we talk about stereotypes a lot on our, our podcast. And one of the big stereotypes of Appalachians is hatred. I mean, that is, you know, hatred towards the other, I guess you would say, like anything that's not considered what, you know, nor a quote unquote, normal, right?
Right.
When you ran, I mean, is that, is that what you saw or did you see something different? I mean, did you see the acceptance? Did you see hatred? What it, you know, what kind of things did you see?
Great question. I think that the stigma, I work in mental health and I talk about stigma all the time. Stigma and stereotype and, you know, implicit bias, all of the things that, that make us kind of human, um, but also the things that are obstacles, uh, in our way. Uh, I think that one of the biggest risks, um, and one of the, um, most dangerous things about the state of West Virginia are the things that people believe about the state of West Virginia. And I think it's one of the reasons we haven't been able to make the same progress that, you know, perhaps our tri-state friends have. Um, and I, I can't tell you how many conferences and, you know, calls I've been on where, you know, I talk about being from the state of West Virginia and people are, you know, kind of shocked. They're like, well, how can something like this happen in a place like that? Um, and, you know, it's a complicated story, you know? The history of West Virginia, um, and, you know, who we are right now is complicated. I mean, we are one of the least diverse states, if not the least diverse state in the entire nation. Um, and, uh, and that I think really does influence our perception. And, um, it can, uh, like you said, the, uh, kind of fear of the other. I think it can enhance that. Uh, my personal experience running in the city of Wheeling, I, I tried to prepare for every terrible thing, every, you know, um, you know, horrible potential event that could happen. Um, you know, uh, I had dog spray in my bag and human pepper spray just in case. Um, and, and, you know, I just had all of these, you know, thoughts that I love my city, I know the people here, but, but also I'm really sticking my neck out and I, and I don't know how that will be, you know, uh, received. And, uh, you know, I, I was so incredibly humbled and made a fool, uh, you know, by the people that I, you know, spoke to because everyone was the kindest, most incredible, thoughtful, um, person I'd ever met. Every person, you know, every door that I knocked on, even the people who decided not to vote for me, you know, and were explicit about it. You know, they were incredibly thoughtful and kind and, and made their decisions not based on personalities or gender identities or anything like this, you know, but on who they thought would best represent their community and their needs. And, um, it, it kind of re-inspired me, you know, for the state of West Virginia. Um, and it, it really reminded me that, you know, the folks here, not just in the city of Wheeling, but across the state of West Virginia, we have a lot on our plate. You know, we have a lot of things that we worry about, a lot of things that we need and a lot of things that the state, um, has failed to provide us. Um, and so many folks are very distrustful of politicians, as they probably should be. And something you were mentioning before about, you know, community organizing and politicians, the, the funny thing to me is that we, um, both in the community organizing world and now as I'm seeing in the, you know, politics world as a politician, we believe that community organizers and politicians are different breeds of people. Um, and I completely reject that. I think they should be the sane person. I think that a politician should be the community organizer. And for them, and in the, and I'll call out politicians, for politicians to believe that their job is not to community organize and community organizers are somehow radical rabble rousers is asinine. I mean, it blows my mind. And so maybe that's one of the problems, uh, you know, in politics nationwide, but in the state of West Virginia, is that we think, um, we other one another, um, both in community organizing and politics. And in community organizing, you know, plenty, I know plenty of organizers who say politicians suck, they're all corrupt, don't trust them, you know, uh, you don't cross that line. And that's not true either. So, um, you know, my, my experience so far, a month and a half in, has been overwhelmingly positive and people are genuinely concerned and passionate about, uh, you know, what can be done to improve the future of our state, you know? Cause we have a lot of work to do and a lot of catching up. But we, you know, we have to, you know, as residents of, you know, the state of West Virginia, we have a lot of work to do to earn, you know, trust and to, you know, build communities that we're proud of. Um, and part of that is holding our elected officials accountable, um, for that work as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I totally agree with your point about community organizers and politicians not being cut from the different cloth. I think that they should be from the same cloth, absolutely.
Right, right.
I definitely want to nerd out a little bit on city council issues, but I do have one more question about your election. And I think it fits quite nicely into the discussion about, you know, the breaking down some of the stereotypes about West Virginia and Appalachia. You made history on election night another way. You, uh, were the first candidate on the newly formed West Virginia Can't Wait platform to be elected to public office. And I think a fair way of characterizing it for our listeners would be, I, I, a progressive platform that among other things, uh, pledges no corporate, to take no corporate money from PACs and things like that. And, and there's a lot of issues I won't tick through on it, but I'm wondering what that meant to you and if that maybe is indicative that people that were not just such a monolithic state that's just run completely by Republicans, but there's an appetite for that type of policy reform?
Yes. So my goodness, I'm so proud to be, to have been a candidate in the, you know, Can't Wait movement. Um, but also, and I've only learned that recently that I was But also, and I've only learned that recently, that I was the first one to be elected. You know, I remember, so Stephen Smith and I, a little background, have worked together for a couple of years in his position as executive director of the West Virginia Healthy Kids and Families Coalition. I was a member of a committee and we worked on, you know, kind of trying to eliminate, you know, child poverty. And, you know, of course I was inspired and I knew he would do big things. I never thought that he was interested in running for public office. And then, gosh, two years ago, I guess, you know, he reached out to me and said, you know, I think that I'm going to run for governor. I would love your support. And, and he and I had spoken about a potential, you know, my potential run for office. I wasn't even sure if that was city council at that point. And he said, I also want to talk about another idea I have. And, you know, that essentially birthed the Can't Wait movement. And I joined immediately and, you know, part of the, I think part of my desire to run was that I felt supported. You know, I felt supported both, you know, emotionally and financially to some degree by the Can't Wait platform or the Can't Wait movement. So having been the first kind of trial run of the Can't Wait movement and successful trial run has been really, really humbling. But I completely agree with you that there is a potentially a, I hate the term, but a silent majority of people who are thoughtful and progressive and regardless of political affiliation, believe in progressive values, believe in equality, believe in racial justice and all these things, but they didn't feel like they had a home, whether that's in their, you know, individual communities or in the state of West Virginia. And I think that what the Can't Wait movement is doing now, and they're kind of reorganizing and restructuring since the, since Stephen wasn't able to secure the, the primary, restructuring on what they can do to support other candidates. And it is, I think, you know, the big picture is that the Can't Wait movement is a philosophy of who West Virginians are and, and what we want from our state and how we want to represent our state. And so I am so, you know, incredibly grateful to, to be able to represent that and work with them in the future, because my goodness, we have some really important candidates on the ballot right now. The other person who I think may be perhaps the second winner was Corey Roman out of Martinsburg, city council, the youngest Martinsburg city council person and the first African American city council person on that board, so, on that council. So yeah, I think that the, you know, the work of Stephen and Katie Lauer, you know, is really starting to pay off and show that people are fed up and they realize that we cannot afford, you know, to play business as usual. And, and, and also, you know, this kind of reinforces the idea that community organizers are politicians and politicians should be community organizers. And I'm so grateful that that's the vision that, you know, Stephen has allowed us to be part of.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it's also, I think the community organizing aspect of it is, is one of the reasons why I think it was so successful in just motivating people to get involved. You know, I, I was looking just at the list of candidates and there were people on there that I, quite frankly, I went to church with growing up. And I was like, I had no idea that, that they would ever run for office and just seeing that and seeing how energized they are was really inspiring. So I think it's great to see, and I think that that movement really has some real energy behind it. I, I wanted to ask you just like, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but I did want to ask you a couple of questions about your role in the city council. So are you actively having city council meetings? I'm not sure how that's working with COVID, but, but what, what does that look like and what are your priorities for the first year?
Yeah, it is a very strange time to be an elected official right now for all of us, but I think particularly for local, you know, local representatives, because the, you know, the impact is so direct and, you know, everything is really touch and go right now. So I, you, I'm really learning trial by fire, I think, for better, for worse. But yeah, we're having our council meetings in, in Zoom format. Actually, we, you know, the first council meeting after I was sworn in was an in-person council meeting where they, you know, officially, you know, kind of, you know, solidified our spaces, city council members. And that first council meeting, we were all exposed to COVID.
Oh my goodness.
In person. And so we're like, that's not a great precedent. We're gonna roll back here and, and reassess. So, yeah. So it's been very strange and I was able to, thank goodness, you know, run part of my campaign, the larger part of my campaign, pre-COVID, which is a very different world. And, you know, my election was in June and COVID hit, you know, hit us here in West Virginia around March. And so the final half of the campaign, often, you know, considered the most, you know, vital, you know, component of a campaign was we could not knock doors, we could not speak to people face to face, we could not host events, and that was the bread and butter. I didn't have the money, I didn't have the name recognition, I didn't have all of these other, you know, kind of accolades that could get you to, you know, win an election. I thought, I have to knock every door in my city, I have to, you know, organize events, and that made it really difficult. But we're, we're doing really good work now. And while there is a learning curve, I think for every new elected official, you know, I'm still learning the way our budgets work and where money goes and, you know, who runs this department, who runs that department. I'm very excited to push forward on a few of the initiatives that I ran on. And I, I wanted to run on very, you know, grassroots, community-based issues that I thought were tangible. And so a few of those things include enhancing and advancing our public transit system here in the city of Wheeling. We have one, which is incredible. And, you know, not every city in the, or not every city in the state of West Virginia does, but there are a lot of things that we can do to improve it. Affordable housing is also an incredibly important issue that I ran on. And that's, you know, that is, hits home for me, you know, as a person who has experienced homelessness, you know, shortly after, you know, our house fire. I've lived in public housing, I know what that's like, and I know that we do not have enough affordable housing, not near enough in the state of West Virginia, but particularly here in the city of Wheeling. And, and some other issues like, you know, cannabis justice. I, you know, I'm going to fight to decriminalize cannabis in the city of Wheeling. I know that has happened in Morgantown, I'm jealous, I wanted to be the first. But bless their heart, hopefully we can, you know, learn from them and be able to, you know, work on our own with, with them as a case study. Homelessness in conjunction with affordable housing is incredibly important. I work in mental health, so I, I acknowledge that, you know, homelessness is an issue that, you know, is, you know, very complex, but it is an issue that is more complex than just giving somebody a home, if that makes sense, especially for their, you know, folks in the city of Wheeling who experience chronic homelessness. These are folks who have been homeless for 10, 15, 25 years. And sometimes they've, they've been able to secure housing and they lose it. And it's a kind of, you know, back and forth. And that reminds me that, uh, mental health is at the, is a foundational component to eliminating homelessness. And so I'm the chair of our health and rec committee in the city of Wheeling. I was able to lobby our mayor so that I could have that position. And I hope to be able to support and, and to pass some initiatives to, to help not only secure housing, but to alleviate the struggle that so many of our homeless community members experience.
Yeah, that's, that's such an important issue, especially with, with affordable housing. Being a new resident to the DC metro area, I, I, that is, it's, I also lived in Nashville, so it's, it's always been an expensive place, but especially here. I mean, I'm fortunate enough to be able to afford housing, which is unfortunate for a lot of people around here. And no community is immune to it and no community is immune to homelessness. And so I think one thing that's really interesting is that you have that lived experience. And, and I think that's really important when it comes to policymaking, especially around homelessness, because it's something that so many people misunderstand. And, and I'm just kind of wondering if you wouldn't mind digging just a little more into that? And what are some of your ideas for how to, how to combat that in Wheeling? Because I know a lot of our listeners have a lot of interest in affordable housing and homelessness. And so I just, I kind of love your, your perspective on that for your city specifically.
Yeah, what, you know, one interesting thing that just came to mind, I remember when I was running for office, I, you know, before COVID, I was at an event and, you know, somebody was kind of grilling me for my, you know, policy positions. And I, I brought up the issue of affordable housing as a, you know, cornerstone and something that I believe, you know, so wholeheartedly, I, you know, I believe that a person truly cannot find mindfulness and, you know, thrive if they cannot feel secure in their home. It's a, you know, if you know the Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that is a foundational component to the, to the hierarchy. And so I remember talking to this guy, older man, white man in his sixties. And I said, we know, I, I believe in affordable housing, it's something that I want to work for. I went on and on and he stopped me and said, well, you know, if we have affordable housing, you know, the kind of people that we're going to have in our city. And I kind of
Goodness.
I, I was, yeah, I was kind of like, I'm sorry? And he went on and he said, well, you know how they treat, you know, apartments and, you know, we just can't be giving things away and just the whole, you know, the whole line, I'm sure you, you get it. And
Oh yeah, oh yeah, that sounds familiar.
Right. And, and so I took a moment and, and to kind of check my privilege to be in a room where they thought that I was like them, you know, because I, I don't think this, this man, bless his heart, knew anything about me, truthfully, didn't know that I'd lived in public housing, didn't know that I've lived in poverty my whole life, didn't know any of these things. And so I, I was, you know, kind of like, so ready to, you know, clap back and say, wait a minute, you know, I am a, you know, I am a young, I was a college student here in the city of Wheeling and, and that's when I, you know, lived in affordable housing. And another remark he made is he said, we want young professionals living in the city of Wheeling, not people who need affordable housing. And I thought, my goodness, are you totally out of the loop here? Young professionals are the people who need affordable housing. And affordable housing is not, you know, it does not, is not synonymized with public housing. Those are two different things. And both are, have space, you know, in our community and, and both are valid. But I think part of the discussion around affordable housing, you know, for, for a lot of the people who are privileged and, and, you know, in our community, you don't have to worry about paying their rent or their mortgage, is about stigma. And, you know, being able to, you know, tell the story of people who live in poverty in a way that is with integrity. And so I remember that guy just being totally, you know, he just, he just totally isolated from the reality of the people who, you know, live in the city. And so a few of the ways that we can, you know, work to secure affordable housing in the city of Wheeling, it's, it's a complex issue, but there, there are a lot of things that a city council can do. So, you know, on a federal level, we can apply for grants that support CDBG funding, which is Community Development Block Grant Funding, which is oftentimes directly allotted to communities that are at or below the poverty line. And my, the ward that I represent here in the city of Wheeling happens to be one of those communities that is at or below the poverty line, represent, you know, you know, very similar to many communities throughout the state. And so we have the opportunity to allot funds, to help build, you know, WODA properties and other, and other, you know, affordable housing, HUD eligible properties. But on the other end, in the, you know, private, you know, market of affordable housing, we also have an opportunity to, one, hold property owners accountable for their, their behavior. We have some really grotesque property owners here in the city of Wheeling. There's like a key four of them that kind of run the rental market. And, you know, and I've learned subsequently that this is something that happens across the state, but there are slum lords that really just abuse people in poverty. I have a few clients who experience severe mental illness and, you know, they are on fixed incomes and they can only afford so much. And the places that these property owners have for them are absolutely horrendous. And so the city has an obligation to protect our community and say that you are not allowed to do business in our community if this is the way that you are, if this is what you're providing, if, if this is the quality of, of life that you seem, you know, think is fit. And while there are people who fight me on this and say, well, you're going to push the property owners out and you're going to, you know, make them go to move to a city and own property in a, a place that's nicer, you know, nicer to them. And I thought if that, you know, our moniker here in, in the city of Wheeling is the friendly city. It's on our signs, it's a billboard, it's a whole thing. And I thought, there is no way that we can call ourselves a wholeheartedly the friendly city if we allow people with power to abuse those without it. And so, you know, being able to hold property owners accountable for that, landlords accountable is, is a huge component to that and not unjustly, of course. And so me and another council member are working on a landlord inspection program, which we do not have, which kind of blows my mind. But one, that's a kind of self-inspection program, which could be really interesting. So I think that, you know, I'm seeing this here in the city of Wheeling, but I think that we, at this point in our, you know, state, we need creative solutions to complex problems. It is, you know, long past the day, you know, that we apply a broad brush of solutions and cross our fingers. I mean, that's what's been done countless times. And, and I think now we have to really dig in and find creative solutions for, you know, issues like affordable housing, because, you know, business as usual never worked and it really isn't working now. So it might make me an unpopular council person, but I think in the long run, you know, it is work that, that pays off.
I think you also should change your, your motto to buy Felicia whenever it comes to those people. Look, somebody else is going, somebody else is going to buy that property. I mean, let's not, let's be real, somebody's going to buy it, somebody's going to want that, that rental money. I mean, this is, it's not that, not that hard to find people who want to make money.
Right. And people, and I found this incredibly frustrating, I mean, people are not considering the big picture here, that if we have one, one property in a nice community that is rundown and smelly and garbage and all these things, that impacts the rest of our community and impacts the perceptions, it impacts the market rates, the market values. So, you know, it's a, it's a lie to believe that, you know, holding people accountable for cleaning up their properties and providing fair and just, you know, opportunities is somehow, you know, going to push them out. Please, if that's the case, leave, we don't, we don't need that here. You know, we want people who take pride in their communities and their properties. And so, you know, it only, I think enhances a community when we have responsible, you know, landlords who maintain their properties. It, it also removes the stigma. I don't know, there's something called, I'm thinking back to my psych classes, the broken window theory about, you know, if, you know, if, if, you know, one, one house in the community has a broken window, then why bother fixing anything else? It's this kind of like mentality of, you know, if they don't care, take care of their, you know, space, then why, why does it matter if I do? And that's impactful, especially for, for small communities like my own.
Yeah. I'm with you on that one. One fun question, you've kind of alluded to it a little bit, but with everything going on, I mean, you, you know, councilwoman, when it comes to local communities, it's really important, right? But it usually doesn't make national media, you know, that, most of the time, right? How, how fun has this been for you though? I mean, in, in all honesty, I mean, you were on the Today Show and you got to be on a pretty big podcast, I won't name which one.
Appalachia, yeah.
You're doing the interview right now. Yeah, you're, I mean, you're doing the interview, you're doing the interview right now is what I was going to say. But, but no, seriously, how, how fun has it been to, to kind of have this whirlwind of everything going on?
You know, truthfully, it's an opportunity of a lifetime. And when I got elected and I, and I got my first few inklings of attention, Amy Jo Hachison, who was a great friend of mine and a community organizer here in the city, she went viral not too long ago for an address she gave to, I believe it was the House of Representatives in regards to poverty. And she, you know, I mean, she has like 25 million views on her Now This video. And she reached out to me and she said, hey hon, you don't have to say yes to everything, you need to take care of yourself, it's going to get crazy. And I said, I hear you, but I, I'm going to do it all. I'm going to take every interview, I'm going to do everything I can. And truthfully, it's been the most fun I've ever had. And I, I'm just so grateful that people are responding in such a positive way. And, and just the energy, it makes me feel really good. And now I have to make people proud. Now I have to really, you know, dig in and, and do the work that I promised. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really in it.
Well, Rosary, we greatly, greatly appreciate you coming on our show and sharing your story and your perspective with us and our listeners, especially since when I, I had my initial call with you, it was following up right after your Today Show interview. So I appreciate you making the time for our little show here. But, but really, it's been a pleasure and I really appreciate you coming on and we're really looking forward to seeing what you do for the city of Wheeling and for the state of West Virginia.
Oh, thank you so much. Anytime.
That was, that was Rosemary Ketchum. I, I am so happy we had her on the show. I, I found her to be incredibly inspiring. And her, her story is so fascinating and just so compelling, everything about it. And so I was, I was just thrilled that she decided to come on the show and, and accepted our, our invitation.
Yeah. I mean, I, first off, we must've sent a really awesome message or something to convince Rosemary that we were, we were worthy of the time. But no, in all seriousness, we're super thankful. And I think it really shows that her story is far, far more complex than what maybe, you know, some of these other shows, like the Today Show and stuff are talking about. Like, I had no idea of her, her upbringing or anything like that. And so just a, a great person. And I, I'm really happy that, that she decided to come on.
Well, it is that time with every episode. John, you've, you've alluded to this at the beginning of the episode. So I'm just going to let you take, take over the, the reins, take over the controls of this ship and landed on that beef this week.
Ladies and gentlemen, live from Parkersburg, West, by God, Virginia, this is the 18 Husky himself, Beef with Big John.
Look, this beef's going to be really simple. It's going to be one of those things, Chuck, I'm not even looking up anything. Okay? There's, to me, everybody should be able to relate to this. Quick question, Chuck, just for you. When you have unfinished work at your job, do you finish it before leaving? Or do you just leave? Take a break, go on vacation?
John, the pressing work that I have to do, I finish it because I, I do. I, I enjoy getting a paycheck, being compensated for my work.
You finish the job because you're a hardworking individual who has a great podcast, if I could say so myself. But
Oh, God, thank you. Yeah.
There are, there are
Labor of love.
There are people out there that, one, don't have a great podcast and, two, do not want to finish their job. And who am I talking about, Chuck? I am talking about the United States Congress. That is who I'm talking about. People who decided, who said, who pledged to give the, the highest service in this land, the highest public service that you can do, according to them, according to this great thing that we've created. However...
This sexy gorgeous experiment we call democracy, ladies and gen, it is this, this shining city on a hill.
Yeah, chef's kiss, you know? But there are downfalls, some of them being Congress themselves. This is, this goes out to both parties. I don't give a who's, you know, who it is. The fact that these people during a pandemic decided that their vacation was more important than actually coming to the table and deciding what could happen in terms of an actual plan to help people is disgusting. That, I mean, it's, that is the clearest word for it. They have never and will never understand what people are going through during this pandemic, because they make $174,000 a year, Chuck. They don't need help. And, I mean, most of them are all, you know, multimillionaires, we won't go into that. But they don't understand what the, what people are going through. They don't understand what unemployed people are going through. And they proved it this week by adjourning. They don't care. If that, if any of these people, like I said, Democrat, Republican, are up for an election, I, I wouldn't vote for them. I mean, they proved to me that they don't actually give a shit. Because if they did, they'd be there fighting for their constituents, rather than taking an adjournment, going, going home, going on vacation, wherever the hell they are. There is so many things going on, Chuck. I mean, from helping people survive unemployment and survive the pandemic versus the president stealing the election by eliminating the postal service. What the hell is Congress doing right now?
What is, what is the point of being in Congress if it's not to protect institutions like the postal service? I mean, yeah, this is a problem. This is a huge problem. And it's kind of ironic in a way, though, because it's actually more dangerous for them to adjourn, you would think, and go back to their home districts.
Yeah. But the thing is, they don't, I mean, a, a lot of them will not go out and seek constituents, because they'll use the pandemic as a reason not to. They'll go into, you know, like I said, a lot of these people are multimillionaires, they'll go to their mansions, they'll Instagram Live or whatever the hell they do and say, you know, I know what you're going through, why they have like all of the marble flooring behind them and crap like that, just like most celebrities do. But the fact is, a politician and somebody who's elected to the United States Congress should be held to a higher standard. And the, the other fact is, if somebody making $30,000 a year would be fired for going home without doing their work, somebody making $174,000 a year with going on vacation and not doing anything deserves to be fired.
Yeah, you know, if you went and looked at how many days they worked, and you know, it's a, I think like the job in the House is, for most members, not that difficult because I believe, if I remember correctly, it does involve pushing a button. Now, to be fair, in the Senate, I do believe it's a little bit more involved. I think you actually have to, you get to go and tell the clerk your vote, maybe, or something like that, or maybe verbalize it. But I, yeah, right, it is tough. But I do believe that it involves the push of a button in the House. So, so there is that, John. It is, you know, if you've got carpal tunnel, maybe, or arthritis could be hard. So I don't want to
Wait, you also just, you also just alluded to the number of days that they work. And funny enough, I was, before this, I looked it up.
You do a little bit of math? You do a little bit of math?
In 2000, in 2018, I'm not, I'm not usually good with math, but I, I do know some numbers. In 2018, the House worked 177 days, I believe. The Senate worked 191. The average American works anywhere from 260 to 313.
Right, right. Well, and you know, in fairness, Congress was never intended to be a full-time job, but members of Congress now typically treat it as that.
Yeah. Because, look at them. I mean, they make $174,000 a year and there's no term limits. It is a full-time job now. It is
Kind of a sweet deal.
Yeah. And it, you know, whatever they were doing beforehand, like I said, if you look, you know, a lot of them are business owners and yada, 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 they make a lot of money, that's why they can afford to campaign. They now can create laws that benefit themselves. So why wouldn't they? I mean, I, I hate sounding like this, like massive conspiracy theorist, but we've gotten to the point now in 2020 where I'm just like, screw it. This is what, this is what's going on.
Well, you know, with that, let's close it out. Again, always follow us on the social medias. Be on the lookout for our special bonus Thursday pod this week on Queer Appalachia. You're not going to want to miss that. Otherwise, check out our website, appodlatcha.com, or shoot us an email. If you want to talk to us about the show, have any suggestions, or you just want to send some hate mail, do it at appodlatcha@gmail.com. We'll be back this Thursday and then next week with more Appod Latch.